All right, welcome to City Hall. Tonight is July 21st, and once again, our heat index is well over 100. Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Ken Hussey, and then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. As we gather here on this summer evening, let us be mindful of our opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Let us keep in mind the enduring values of our community, and making sure that we put forth efforts in those areas and on those things upon which we can build our community with confidence. We are thankful for this day, its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us, seeking strength and guidance for each day that comes, for all its duties, its challenges, and its opportunities. May we give our best always to the citizens in our community, and let us continue to strive to make Jefferson City a better community for all. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to City Hall at this point in time. I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum tonight. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, under miscellaneous agenda items, it's not very often that I meet a lot of 16-year-old sophomores, as I have an 18 and a 14-year-old daughter. They don't come to the door very often. I'm not sure why. But Tanner, would you please stand along with your brother Levi, right? I'm guessing Levi is the taller one, right? Got him by four years, it says here. Understand Tanner, who's 20, and elder, Tanner and his brother Levi, Tanner will be a sophomore, is that right? He'll be a junior, okay, at Blair Oaks this upcoming fall. He's one of nine young men to represent Team USA at the Junior Euro Golf Cup in St. Andrews, Scotland, August 1st to the 9th. There he will be playing with Team Canada, Team Europe. There is a press release that's coming out soon on this, and we would like to welcome you and your brother and your family here tonight, and we have city coins for both of you. Do you ever play like as a ringer in a tournament? Sometimes some of us could use one. Why don't you guys come up here and I'll give you these coins. Make sure, Mom. So who's the best shot on the day? Do you have a particular course of town you'd like to play?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. All right, well, thanks. Mom, you want to get a picture?
I'll do that right quick.
You guys know to stay early. All right. All right. All right, we'll come back after you win over there. Appreciate it, guys. Thanks again. Good luck. Also, I see tonight that we have a scout that just joined us. If you and your father could come forward, please. Up to the podium here. Welcome this evening. Tell us, if you would, your name and your troop, and what badge you might be working on tonight. Great, all right. All right, and you are? Cool. All right. Well, thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for being a part of Scouts, both of you, and I've got a coin for you also. And you said Troop 7, right? I think we could, what school was that?
Oh, okay.
At a what church?
LBS Church.
Oh, okay. So I think we see a line from Troop 7. Thanks for being here tonight. And what's going, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting? Okay, anything else? Okay, next, we have a public hearing tonight on a bill associated with Bill 2014-32. Ask for third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .14 acres from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RA2 High Density Residential for land addressed as 911 St. Mary's Boulevard, described as Lot 5, Block 2, Washington Park Edition in Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application came before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in June. This property is located at 911 St. Mary's Boulevard, currently zoned C1 Neighborhood The map on the screen shows the proximity of the lot in relation to the other properties and the zoning districts. You'll see that it's right on the edge between C1 and RA2 zoning districts. The property owner wishes to rezone it to RA2 for the purposes of constructing a single-family home on this property. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that it be rezoned to RA2, and in fact, it does conform with the city's comprehensive plan for this property to be in residential use. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of Bill 2014-32? Anyone to speak against? Please hold your hand up. All right, that will close the public hearing as far as this bill's concerned. Debate by council on 2014-32. Sign and roll call, please.
Aye. Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Nay.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to third reading of 2014-33, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending sections of Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to daycare homes, drive-through restaurants, funeral homes, funeral arrangement service offices, crematoriums, and mortuaries.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Periodically, staff does a review of the zoning code to make sure that it is current and remains current. The series of amendments went to the Planning and Zoning Commission in June, and the Commission did recommend these amendments. The First Amendment would remove drive-in and drive-through food service restaurants from the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. The focus there would be to create a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District that was less vehicle-oriented, so it would remove those drive-in uses and drive-through food uses in that district. Eliminate references in the zoning code to daycare homes being conditional uses. For many years, daycares were various, treated variously in the zoning district. Some required certain types of permits, such as a conditional use permit. In order to make this use fit in with the state's requirements, we proposed to eliminate the need to go to the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit in the future so that daycares with 10 children or fewer would be authorized by administrative permit and would not have to get a conditional use permit. They would comply, continue to comply with all of the state's regulations. The only difference would be that they do not have to get the conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustment. And then the last series of changes involve the language affecting funeral homes, mortuary service, crematoriums, and related uses. That series of uses had gotten to be a little out of date, so in consultation with some representatives from the industry and other members of the public, these series of updates are proposed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McMillan on 2014-33? Anyone to speak in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
What's the difference, the practical difference, between an administrative permit and a Board of Adjustment? Does that remove the opportunity for neighbors to have any comment on that?
Yeah, yes. That would be, when you look in the zoning matrix, there's a, the P would indicate a permit that would be authorized or issued by staff. A C would be a permit that would be issued by, or go through the conditional use process. And then there's an SE, which is a special exception use permit that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So at the present time, daycare homes of fewer than seven children do not have to go through that process. So we would just be extending that to 10, so we'd go from seven to 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Anyone here to speak in favor of 2014-33? Anyone to speak against? That will close the public portion of the hearing. Any discussion amongst the council? Sign and roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-34, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing the name of Frog Hollow Road in the 2600 block to Tree Valley Lane.
Ms. McMillan, or is this Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Janice, go ahead.
Chapter 25 outlines the process for changing a street name, and in this case, Frog Hollow Road was being impacted by new construction that realigns the streets in this area. Frog Hollow Road currently extends through this area over a bridge, a very old dilapidated bridge, and then proceeds out into the county. With the recent construction of, or the decision to reconstruct this section of the roadway so that it bypasses this bridge, a new street name was needed for the section of street that's shown in the green line. After consultation with the neighbors in Vane Wood subdivision and others that are affected by this, the street name of Tree Valley Lane was determined to be an acceptable street name for that. So this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a hearing, and is coming to you tonight for a public hearing and final action if you approve of this street name change to Tree Valley Lane. And this only affects the 2600 block of Frog Hollow Road, by the way.
Any questions of staff? First, let's, before we do that, anyone here to speak in favor of 2014-34? Against? Okay, that'll close the public portion. Questions of council to staff? Any debate by council? Sign and roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into number six appointments by the mayor. These are in regards to our new appointments after Councilwoman Ward had joined us at the last meeting, and Laura, welcome. You can read those there yourself. Is there a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, you just got the voice, I just got the sign from third base from our coach, Drew Hilbert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll move into presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dick Pearson. Dick is here to talk to us tonight about county zoning, which will be on our ballot in August. Mr. Pearson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Dick Pearson. I live out in the county. I have a business in Jefferson City and the city limits, and I'm here this evening just to make some brief comments and answer any questions you might have about proposed zoning to be voted on on August 5th. Obviously, the city has had zoning for quite some time, so you understand the concept of what it's about and the things it can do. Zoning is important to protect the property rights and values of Coal County citizens. Coal County is one of only four non-chartered first-class counties in Missouri that is not subject to some form of zoning. The issue first arose from citizens' complaints to the County Commission, so over years ago, and the Commission appointed a committee of volunteers to study the zoning issue, and we've been working on that for approximately five years. The result of the study is we have a draft proposal, which is available on the county's website, of suggested zoning changes, but by state statute, the ballot issue has to be very simple, and all it says is, shall the county of Coal adopt zoning? So there will be a hearing process, if it passes later on in this year, to adopt formal zoning regulations. We did take careful consideration to make sure that the cities, the county zoning issues and all the incorporated areas matched up with the current zoning that's in place so that they would work together. And so far, the County Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the Jefferson City Board of Realtors, and the Jefferson City Home Builders have all endorsed the issue and recommended for it to pass. There is a committee of Citizens of Organized Growth, which was recently formed, to work on the ballot initiative to help pass zoning. The committee is made up of a variety of individuals from the city and throughout the county. Dave Braun is the chairman, and Mike Peewee Fork is the treasurer of that particular organization. So it is important that all citizens of Coal County understand and hopefully support this issue. The city of Jefferson makes up a large majority of the county, paying 65% of the property taxes and 62% of the personal property taxes within the county. What happens to the county also affects city residents. Some of the opposition says that, have made statements that the city voters shouldn't be allowed to vote because it doesn't affect them. I disagree with that because it does affect property values. If the county, and we have no regulations in the county, it will eventually affect all the incorporated areas. So I urge you to individually to support the issue, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Mr. Bray.
Mr. Pearson, you said early in your comments, first-class counties in Coal County. Would you say that again?
Coal County is one of only four first-class counties, non-chartered first-class counties that does not have zoning. Jasper, Cape Girardeau County, and Callaway County, and Coal County are the only four of first-class counties.
I see. Do you happen to know how many first-class counties?
Yes, there are 14.
14. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pearson? Dick, thanks for coming, and thanks for your help on that, and that, it's August wind, Dick?
August.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pearson. All right, moving on, underneath number eight, Gail Strope has an update on our Fire Chief Search Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Chief Recommendation Committee has narrowed their list of applicants down to three, and they announced those applicants. They are Jay Nymeyer, Matt Schofield, and Jason Turner. And they will be holding a public forum this Thursday, that's July 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and the public is invited to come in during that time and meet the candidates, ask questions, and then provide feedback to the committee on their recommendations.
All right, any questions of the council? All right, Gail, thank you very much. Moving on, consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept number 10 as printed. A motion on number 10 as printed.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Sign and, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll have bills introduced. First reading of 2014-38, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, relinquishing a sanitary sewer easement across tract B of Westview Heights subdivision, Section 9, Bagnall Drive, and Jasper Lane.
Mr. branch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this bill would vacate a sanitary sewer easement in Westview Heights. As you might realize, Westview Heights isn't a subdivision in the city. However, the city does control its wastewater services there, and so we would be vacating an easement for that. The owner of the property, Hefteff for Humanity, requested this vacation. To make the lot buildable, they had to relocate a sanitary sewer, so they've done that and dedicated a new easement for that line, so this line will be vacated so that they can construct a home there. Now, if that process is complete, we'd actually went through, back in January, the Public Works and Planning Committee and discussed this a little bit and recommended approval.
All right, any questions of Matt on 38? Okay, moving on, we have first reading of 39, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a defense cost-sharing agreement with Coal County and supplementally appropriate the funds for the agreement from the reserved fund.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an issue we talked about in closed session, but certainly it's time to discuss it in open session. Coal County Commission has requested a contribution from the city in the amount of up to $14,220 to assist with the current lawsuit pending with Ameren. Ameren's filed suits throughout the state about, basically arguing that their property tax should be valued at a lower amount for their infrastructure. The counties have banded together and decided to share a defense. The primary cost of this is an expert and an attorney who's an expert in the field. So those are the two primary costs. Coal County's share of this defense is $236,812. The county has approached all the taxing districts within the county to share in that cost. Coal County has agreed to pay the first $118,000, so, and then the other county, the other districts will share pro rata based on how much property tax they receive. Ours happens to be around 10%, so our share of that would be 114, I'm sorry, $14,220. That is a little higher than we talked about in closed session. At the time, we estimated $10,000, but when they actually ran the numbers, they came back with a little bit higher amount. It's percentage-wise, it's considerably more, but actual dollar-wise, it's not much more. And to be clear, what'll happen is, it's, Coal County will pay a proportionate share of the overall defense costs, but we won't be touched until their overall share is paid. So it's, I hate to say probable, but it's probable we don't ever have to pay this. However, we certainly are agreeing to be on the hook for that. The second part of this is where the money would come from. As you might guess, there's not actually a line item designated for this. So it's Steve's suggestion that we're going to go into the reserve fund to get the $14,000, and then whatever money's saved at the end of the year, which we anticipate to be pretty good, will be put back, or spent however you all decide to spend it. Happy to answer any questions.
Drew, when would we get that money back, possibly?
You know, it would be at the end of the, we won't actually have to send the money, I don't think. We'll just be on, I have to remember that now. We'll just be on the hook for it. But it would be at the end of the litigation. There is a lawsuit approaching pretty soon, and what we expect is that when the first case goes to trial, the rest of them will fall like dominos because they're all exactly the same, so the parties will likely settle up after the first one, after the resulting first case. And I think that was only a couple of months away, wasn't it? Couple of months.
Could it be before the 2015 budget set?
Yeah, well, it's pretty optimistic.
It could be around that time.
Could be. A lot of, it's hard to say because delays in trial are certainly common.
Okay. Any questions by the council on 39? All right, moving on, my first reading of 40, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting the name of Creek Trail Drive for the extension of Creek Trail Drive from Portobello Place Drive to Le Carr Drive.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is constructing the extension of Creek Trail Drive as one of several improvement projects in this vicinity. If passed, this ordinance would officially accept the name of Creek Trail Drive as the name of the street that extends from Portobello Place Drive to Le Carr. And you saw this map previously with another bill. Basically, the street extension is shown by this purple line that extends from the end of Creek Trail Drive in the vicinity of Portobello Place and would extend over to Le Carr Drive, which is west of the 179 Overpass.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan on 40 in the council? All right, signing that, we'll have first reading of 41, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by changing the personnel schedule changes within planning and protective services.
Gail, are you going to do this? Oh, okay. Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you are aware, the Inspection Division Director's position was placed into the Separation Incentive Plan in 2013, and that position supervised three subdivisions, three divisions, building inspections, environmental health, and property maintenance. So you can see the gap that left in our organization. Subsequent to that, we flattened the organization so that property maintenance and environmental health reported directly to me, and building inspection was placed in with planning and zoning under Development Services and supervised by Eric Barron. So that's the situation that we have today, and that's what our department organization looks like today. If Bill 41 is passed, it would restore the Building Inspection Division Director and Building Official position back into our organization. And at that time, the Building Official, which would be the new title of that position, would supervise the Building Inspection Division, which consists of three inspector positions. Currently, it's a building inspector, a plumbing inspector, and an electrical inspector. This bill has a couple of moving parts, three moving parts, the second of which would be to rename those inspectors as all building inspectors. So the building inspector, the electrical inspector, and plumbing inspector would all have the same title as building inspector, although granted, they would all have their own areas of expertise. The third part is to create a career ladder for the building inspection staff. Currently, if you're hired as a building inspector in the City of Jefferson organization, you're a building inspector for as long as your tenure here remains. There's really not an opportunity for advancement, regardless of how much training or certification that you may obtain. The career ladder would create an opportunity to have recognition for training and education that the building inspectors obtain through their career, and one of the goals is to have them certified in their various trades and inspections. The International Code Council offers a variety of certifications in the industry, and so upon an inspector obtaining four certifications, they would be eligible to petition for that bump. obtaining four certifications, they would be eligible to petition for that bump up or that promotion to a higher grade, and also get a pay increase that would be associated with that of 5%.
Any questions by staff tonight? I don't think we're voting on this tonight. It's just an introduction. Any questions by the council of Ms. McMillan? Mr. Bray.
Ms. McMillan, the Building Inspector 1 and Building Inspector 2 positions are created?
Yes.
And they will cross-train so they can, can a Building Inspector 1 also do plumbing, electrical, and, and? And building inspector? Or can only the Building Inspector 2 do multiple areas?
They could all do multiple areas. Currently, there's an informal, had been an informal arrangement among the inspectors to help each other out and cover inspections when another inspector was out. So that the plumbing inspector would cover if the building inspector happened to be out or couldn't cover a certain inspection. We want to formalize that arrangement and actually provide training and education and an opportunity to be certified and encourage that certification so that that's an expectation of the job, and also it's something that's made clear to the building and development community that's what we expect of our inspectors, that they will be cross-trained combination inspectors.
Yes.
The staff recommends approval of this bill, right?
Yes. After, we had, Mr. Kroll and I had a number of consultations with representatives from the building community, as did several members of the council. So I think that you're aware of some of the comments and recommendations that that community wants us to pursue. And that's, that's what this bill intends to do, is to implement those recommendations.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on 41? Bob?
Yes, I, I'm curious. I know we've been working with the building community with the proposal for a committee to review building code, and we've all had our appeals to building code decisions, and we've all had a lot of conversation with them about their concerns and so forth. I was wondering, with everything being, coming to the committee in the past, why this, you know, this reorganization was, is there an urgency or something that, to keep it from going through a committee process, or, I mean, it just seemed like that this is breaking from what we've done in the past, and maybe that's intended to be that way, but I'm curious.
Janice, I think Steve was going to address that.
Probably answer that. Some of it's timing with the interim that we have going on right now. We're working on an interim solution with actually some, at least one, I think, from Columbia. So we've got that interim solution going on that we don't really want to have go on too long. And then the other is the, just the timeframe and advertising and going through the process. I think that'll take at least a month or two. And so we were trying to avoid some of that, we're trying to reduce some of that timeframe. We certainly can do that if that's something that's important. Just understand that it has an impact on the timing.
I don't think it matters that much to me, but I was just curious. It seems, this seems like a pretty significant change, and I just thought that those are the things that generally are worked on in committee.
Just the timing of the short-term interim. Right now, we just don't have a person full-time in there. And we've got a full-time person, but it's a temporary solution.
Any other questions of staff on 41? Seeing none, we'll move into bills pending, 2014-27. Third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated for the Clay Street Bike Plaza Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Clerk indicated, this is our construction contract for our bike plaza, which is going to be constructed off the main street, off the end of the new bike pet, or bike pet bridge over the Missouri River. Sam Gaines is the low bid contractor on this job. The cost would be $149,602. The city's portion of that comes from sales tax, a little over 30, almost $32,000. The remainder is funded by a grant, an STP grant, and CDBG funds. The, as you may recall, again, this is a competitive grant process through MoDOT, and the city was awarded a grant for the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 27? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-28.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an actual cost utility agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
And I understand there's a substitute tonight, Councilman Scrivner.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Turned it off, said to turn it on. I'll say that again, then, for all those that didn't hear me. I move a substitute for 2014-28.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the substitute. Matt, what's substitute do?
Basically, the substitute modifies the dollar amounts in the agreement. I can explain it further here when you're ready.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, this is a utility agreement with MoDOT. They're basically reimbursing the city for some engineering costs for relocation of sanitary sewers associated with interchange. I have a map up here. We can discuss in a moment. What had happened due to the Boys and Girls Club being relocated, there was an opportunity, and actually Bob Gilbert, managing partner with Bartlett and West, is here. They actually produced this map for us as well. They designed the sewers through this area. But the, basically because of the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club and that building not, no longer being needed, there were some cost savings identified by the engineer to reconstruct the lines in a different manner. Obviously, that takes a little bit more engineering, but the net savings in construction dollars was worth that to MoDOT. And so they have modified the agreement to include those dollars. I think the net savings is around $80,000 net out of the MoDOT project, so they were happy to do that. Yeah, of course, these are estimates as we go forward. You know, those will be trued up as the project is bid. But basically, this agreement that we're talking about is concerning the lines in green shown here. The new interchange kind of configuration is shown in yellow up on the screen. So this will modify those green lines. And those sewer lines will be constructed with the MoDOT project as they build the interchange. The, just, I'll just point out a couple of other things. I'm going to show this map again, 131, while we're talking about it. But the blue line is part of our Dunkland and Lafayette intersection project, which is going on right now with JCI and Jeff City Industries. They're building a signal here. But also, as part of that project, they're rebuilding this sewer line through here to serve, you know, the local area. The, in addition, JCI is building a crossing of Dunkland Street for the main trunk line of sewer, which is shown in red. And that way, during, as they build this out, once their traffic control is done, they can move on, and we'll have this intersection open ahead of the school year and as well as ahead of the interchange construction. And while we're talking about it, I'm just going to go ahead and point out that the red line represents what Bill 31 is about. That's the roughly $1.5 million sewer line that's on Bill 31, starts over at McCarty Street and extends basically over here to Leslie. This is the roundabout area. These are the ball fields on Lincoln. I just noticed something that should say Stadium up there instead of Leslie. Leslie's down here. But, but that's under Bill 31, so we'll be discussing that in a moment. Just get you orientated with all the different sewer, sewer work going on in the area. And the sewer work's not only a result of the interchange, that's what we're talking about with this bill, but part of our mandate by EPA to work with our overflows and infiltration issues. Well, you'll see a lot of sewer work in this area, as noted on this map. It's referred to as Basin 5 and 6, a lot with our council agendas.
Okay. Thank you, Matt, for that explanation of the substitute. There's a substitute on the floor. Any discussion on the substitute? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, we're talking about 39, I'm sorry, not 39, 28 as substituted. Any other questions for staff on 28? Matt, thanks for that clarification. Roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of 29, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a portion of right-of-way on an unnamed alley in the 600 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this will vacate an unnamed alley just off Marshall Street, north of Dunkland. Again, related to Lafayette interchange, there's a, part of the right-of-way negotiations, we'll relocate a barber shop along the interchange, and this lot's being contemplated for that. Lincoln's requested that we vacate this unnamed alley next to their daycare. They own property on both sides of the alley and basically use it as a driveway now. So staff has no opposition to that and recommend vacation.
Okay. Any questions of staff or debate on 29? Seeing none, roll Carlos.
Mr. Mayor, I'll extend from the vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else? All right, roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham. Henry.
Stand. Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have third reading of Bill 31, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with JC Industries Incorporated for the Basin 5 and 6 upgrades Phase 1 project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And I put a chart up here. I know there's a lot of questions about the various bid numbers last time someone had made this chart. Actually, I stole the chart from Bob Gilbert's letter. It's a carbon copy of what he had. The letter I emailed out earlier today about the, about the project. I do have some paper copies here, if anybody needs one. You might raise your hand, maybe Janice or somebody can give you one if you need be, if you hadn't had a chance to look at it. But basically, the construction contracts I indicated, I'll just go forward, the contracts, what we're talking about, will build the red line, starting at, find my cursor here, starting at McCarty Street and go over towards the roundabout there at Lafayette and Leslie, near the ball fields. Go back to the bids here. But, so that's the construction contract. When we bid this project, again, Bartlett and West was our engineer on it, and there was some alternates in the bid versus pipe type, basically. The, we received the bid from JCI, the top bid up there, and that was for, when you see in the pipe material column, PP is polypropylene type pipe. And that's, we had a person come and comment about why we weren't using that pipe in that bid at the previous meeting. We obviously looked at that number and Bartlett and West as well, and it was about, I think it was 45% lower than the estimate in anybody else's bid, quite a bit lower. As you can see, most of the bids are clustered around 1.5 million, and this is just under a million. So I guess about 30% lower. We had some question about that, and JCI had called us back immediately and said, you know, they had messed up in their sheet and wouldn't be able to honor that bid. Of course, when we have these bids, you know, that's, if it were a small mistake, you know, maybe that wouldn't be okay. But in something like this, you know, the city's typically not heavy-handed. If somebody notices right away, we wouldn't recommend their bid. They also told us, though, in the same breath that, as David was talking with them, that they could honor their PVC bit, PVC pipe bid, which is really our preferred pipe material on this job. The, but I just went ahead and included Bob's chart here to show you the different bids. Basically, the city can get the PVC pipe alternate for basically the same price as the other polypropylene bids from Sam Gaines Sterling. And you can see them here on your chart, the next three lines. So the staff recommended, we didn't change any numbers on their bid, staff recommended JC Industries to complete the project. And one thing I did indicate that, you know, they're currently building the intersection project for the city here. We, the city has a long history with JCI, and they do a lot of good work here, local contractor. They are able to gain some efficiency, get us to that better pipe type. One of them that they've already come up with is that, for example, if they're awarded the bid, you know, they'll go ahead and do this Lafayette crossing right here where I have my cursor as part, while they're doing their intersection project. So that will kind of negate the need for additional traffic control later. So that's how they're able to get us that bid a little cheaper. But that's just one item. But, but anyway, that's the recommendation. I know Bob is here. I asked Bob to attend in case there's any detailed questions about the bid documents. He would obviously be better to answer those than I. He, happy to answer any questions. I think I hit the highlights here, but try to answer any questions.
Any questions on 31 for staff? All right. Mr. Gilbert, thanks for being here. Rick, did you have a question?
Go ahead. So you're suggesting that the value of the PVC over the PP is $22,000, and we should go for the higher bid because of the desired product?
Get back here. Yeah, the, basically, when you look at this bid, there's about $20,000 difference on, our $22,000 difference on the Sam Gaines bid versus that. The, I think as Bob pointed out in his note, there's typically would be around $130,000 worth of difference in the cost of the pipe if you look at these bids and some of their analysis. The staff would much prefer the PVC pipe alternate, just in long-term. We've had a lot better luck with that. The polypropylene's a newer product. Now, when you look at a bid that's a million and a half, $22,000 a unit price bid is really, it's dead equal, if you want to call it that. One, like I said, though, there's already manholes installed for the PVC option, because once we saw this, you know, we had to approve manholes on the current job, and so there are manholes. So if it was, the goal was to change it to polypropylene pipe, obviously, we'd have to modify those. Now, if there's any joint leakage or anything like that, which is why what we would, why we'd prefer the PVC pipe type in the future, polypropylene's a little harder to work on for the staff, and so our field staff would much prefer the PVC pipe as well.
Good, Rick.
From our engineer, resident engineer on this, if he has a few comments. If not, that's fine, too.
Bob, can you give us your impression between the two different types of pipe? I think that's basically the question. Is that correct, Rick?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let's see, procedurally, Bob Gilbert, 1319 Moreland Avenue, and I'm with Bartlett and West. As far as the difference in the pipe types, I stayed fairly general in the letter because I could write, you know, volumes on the modulus of elasticities and things like that with the pipes, and we're not going to go there tonight. But basically, in a nutshell, the way I'd compare it is PVC is more rigid wall construction, so it's thinner wall. So the same inside diameter that's carrying the flow is the same on both pipes, but PVC has a thinner, more rigid wall. And the PP, or polypropylene pipe, has a thicker wall because it has corrugations in it because it's a more flexible pipe material. So it has to have, you know, structural support in the profile of the pipe. The main thing that we hear about these pipe types, and I put in my letter, is the maintenance. It's, it is the difference in wall thickness and the, just the experience of staff, you know, among communities that have been using PVC for decades. You know, their staff knows how to make a tap or make a repair, or, you know, go in and actually, you know, reconnect new pipe segments when failures occur. So with a new pipe type, there is some learning curve and maybe discomfort, I'll call it, with, with the use of different pipe materials. We bid this job with both pipe types on purpose, and we wanted to have the understanding and the value equation so you guys could look at it and say, which one do you want? And it is clear from all the work we did with your staff that PVC was the preferred material. and the value equation so you guys could look at it and say, which one do you want? And it is clear from all the work we did with your staff that PVC was a preferred material, but we expected it to cost quite a bit more. So, you know, looking at the total project budget, the entire Basin's 5 and 6 project, which was indicated in red and blue up there, there's a lot more to go on this project, and so, you know, we had our eye on the overall budget of this project, and so PVC and polypropylene were bid so that we could, number one, have bidders bid against each other in terms of pipe material providers, okay, that creates better value, it's kind of like bidding asphalt and concrete on the same road project, but by bidding the two pipe types, you've got good competitive bids from both PVC and polypropylene providers. And in this case, the way it worked out, with JCI's bid on PVC being just barely above the low bid of Sam Gaines, which is the polypropylene, that difference is much less than we had anticipated. So, given the project was overall under budget by $200,000 to $300,000, and the increase to get PVC, which is what your staff wanted, was so little compared to what we thought it would be, this seemed like a good recommendation to us as well.
All right, any other questions, Bob?
Bob? You mentioned the PP has corrugation. Does the corrugation show up on the interior wall?
No, it's corrugated, and then it has smooth wall on the inside and the outside. So, when the pipe shows up, it looks like a smooth wall pipe, it's just the wall is about, you know, that thick versus that thick.
Yeah. I was wondering about the friction inside.
Yeah, no, the friction's the same.
That would be the same. Thank you, Bob.
Bob?
Would, Bob, would this be similar to a situation where you might have repair parts in stock, and you go out and you buy, say, say you have repair parts for a Chevrolet, and you go out and you buy Fords, now the repair parts for the Chevrolet won't work on the Ford, so you have to have a stock of repair parts for the Fords as well?
Correct, there's inventory.
Inventory for repair parts, plus you also have to understand how to repair the Ford, whereas you were working on the Chevrolet before. They might both perform the same function, and they might perform it in an equal way, but you've just been using one rather than the other, and it might create more continuity to stay with what you've been using. Would that be a fair?
It's a very good, I think it's a very good way to say that, and, you know, if the project would have turned out and the bids would have been much different between polypropylene and PVC, you know, it may have been worth the cost to consider inventory, repair, training, other things for your staff, but with them being so close together, and Matt said it earlier, and I'll echo it, $22,000 is a lot of money for us individually, but on a one and a half million dollar project, you know, as a percentage of what that is, it's essentially the same bid. I mean, if we can, if we could estimate something that close and it comes in and bids that, I mean, we'd be high-fiving each other and dancing around, because it's difficult to get that close, so we consider that bid essentially the same amount of money. And obviously, this is a unit price contract, so the exact figure of what is spent, you know, at the end of the job isn't even known yet, because it's all paid for by every unit installed, and it's very, very close.
Any other questions of staff or engineer on 31? All right, thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we have a summary here of Resolution 2014-14, please.
A resolution on Amendment 7.
Is there a motion to accept? And a second, it's been moved in second by Mr. Branch, is that right? Jim, is that you? Tell us more about it, Mr. Hilpert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 5th, the state of Missouri voters will vote on the question of increasing or having, imposing a 3/4 cent sales tax, which a lot of people have called the MoDOT tax, and it is for infrastructure and transportation needs. As part of that, there'd be $40 million worth of projects that will be constructed within Cole County during the term of that tax, which does have a sunshine. The, it's focusing, its focus is on infrastructure, deteriorating infrastructure, and so ultimately, the proponents will tell you it's about safety, and the tax also is a byproduct of creating a lot of jobs. However, this will, the project list, as I said, was included, and it was actually taking, the projects from Ferrari were much, most of them were taken from Campo, who made those recommendations to the state, and they adopted those. So, the resolution calls for the city of Jefferson, for your constituents to carefully study the issue, and then to support the transportation infrastructure needs of the state as they deem appropriate. Oh, sorry, somebody got buzzed. There, I know there's been a question at the council level about when resolutions are appropriate, when they aren't, we did inquire of our, of Tom Rackers, who is our lobbying at the state, and he did recommend that this is an appropriate method for the council to speak on this issue, and that he did encourage you all to adopt a resolution very similarly. And in addition, I know that you all got a letter from Senator Kehoe, who did also believe that this is a good bill, and encouraged the council to educate citizens on it. Happy to answer any questions I can.
Any questions of Drew on Resolution 2014-14? Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call please.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we have third reading of number 36, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the state of Missouri for parking.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a new parking lease for the Hotel Governor Office Building. The lease previously had 150 spaces in it, and 50 of those were conferees attending that, conferences in that building. Our new lease is 100 spaces and basically deleted the conferee spaces. Now, those folks will still have opportunity to park in the garage, but they had paid the daily rate as everyone else would, attending other events there. In addition, we've, were able to up the rent on those 100 spaces from the previous $15 to $20 a month, and so gained a little extra parking revenue there. This had been a problem, just administering the conferee spot, I think from the people in the governor's office building, as well as our own parking staff, because they had to park on a certain level, and trying to explain that to folks from out of town was a little difficult, so I think it's a good deal for them and a good deal for us as well. I think we have a $24,000 a year lease here is our term, and there's also built-in increases on this lease. Happy to answer any questions, I know Drew negotiated a lot of this lease, so he may have some other information if need be.
Any questions at all on 35?
Rick? Could you tell me again what the length of the lease is, and is there increases throughout the years?
Yeah, I think they're in five-year terms, and Drew, you can go ahead and explain it if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember now, the rental goes up.
It's 5%.
5% on August 17th, so five years, and then again on, is that five years?
Yeah, it's a five-year term, and it goes up 5%.
And then on August 2020. The reason, I wrote it a little bit different than we do sometimes, we usually say five years from such and such, I just thought it'd be easier to have the exact date that it goes up, so everybody knows it. So, the rental increased 5%, so it'll go up 10% during, of course, the term of the lease.
Okay, any other questions on 35? Council debate, roll call please.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we have a summary here of Resolution 2014-14, please.
A resolution on Amendment 7.
Is there a motion to accept? And a second, it's been moved in second by Mr. Branch, is that right? Jim, is that you? Tell us more about it, Mr. Hilpert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 5th, the state of Missouri voters will vote on the question of increasing or having, imposing a 3/4 cent sales tax, which a lot of people have called the MoDOT tax, and it is for infrastructure and transportation needs. As part of that, there'd be $40 million worth of projects that will be constructed within Cole County during the term of that tax, which does have a sunshine. The, it's focusing, its focus is on infrastructure, deteriorating infrastructure, and so ultimately, the proponents will tell you it's about safety, and the tax also is a byproduct of creating a lot of jobs. However, this will, the project list, as I said, was included, and it was actually taking, the projects from Ferrari were much, most of them were taken from Campo, who made those recommendations to the state, and they adopted those. So, the resolution calls for the city of Jefferson, for your constituents to carefully study the issue, and then to support the transportation infrastructure needs of the state as they deem appropriate. Oh, sorry, somebody got buzzed. There, I know there's been a question at the council level about when resolutions are appropriate, when they aren't, we did inquire of our, of Tom Rackers, who is our lobbying at the state, and he did recommend that this is an appropriate method for the council to speak on this issue, and that he did encourage you all to adopt a resolution very similarly. And in addition, I know that you all got a letter from Senator Kehoe, who did also believe that this is a good bill, and encouraged the council to educate citizens on it. Happy to answer any questions I can.
Any questions of Drew on Resolution 2014-14? Any council debate?